Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for April 6, 2021. Hoping all had a nice Easter weekend, great weather out there. Item number one, if we could call the roll, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Here.
Counselor Brennan.
Here.
Counselor Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Lehman.
Present.
Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you very much. Item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing on the agenda itself, sir, but I have several things for the consent agenda.
That's fine. Counselor Brennan?
Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the agenda for April 6.
I'll second it, Mayor.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras to approve the agenda as stated for their discussion. Discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. The agenda has been approved. Moving ahead to item number four, consent agenda. Changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have several. First, 4A1 in the City Council minutes, there's a spelling error, error on item 7C, which states that currently, or did state that Shakopee Housing Parkers, well, we don't park houses in Shakopee, that's Shakopee Housing Partners. On 4A3, on the policy action requested, there's a line on the memo that inadvertently is mislabeled resolution as R 2020 TAC 50, it should be 2020 TAC 51. And on 4A4, since the packet has been sent out, we've received five payments totaling $378.64, and I sent out the updated resolutions on that to you all earlier today. And that are all, that is all the changes from staff, sir.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Lehman?
Matt Lehman, thank you. Mr. Reynolds, is the resolution for the inter fund loan River Bluffs development, the change of the number of the resolution, does that change any of the terms of the resolution that was before us marked as Resolution 5.0?
The only thing that is wrong is it was designated 5.0, and it should be 5.1.
Okay, so all the numbers are the same.
Everything else is the same.
Okay, and then procedural question, can we adopt this consent agenda by noting them updated items?
I would think that the motion maker would be noting these administrative changes, adjustments.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the following updates. City Council minutes, Housing Partners typo correction. Item number 4A3, amendment to the inter fund loan resolution for River Bluff Development. Resolution should have been 5.1 instead of 5.0 typo. And the updated delinquent sewer and storm drainage accounts received prior to this meeting, $500 and some dollars as pointed out by staff.
Waiting second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion for amended consent agenda and a second. There would no, unless there's further discussion, we would read the consent agenda into the public record before we vote. Counselor Lehman, did you have a question?
No, sir.
That's fine.
Actually, Mayor, I do have a question, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Nope.
Since I did the call-in thing because my laptop isn't working, how do I raise my hand in the call-in? I know to mute and unmute is star six, is it star nine?
I'm not sure on that, but you're, when you want to speak, your border on your icon kind of lights up, so I've been watching that.
Okay.
And I'll try to call on you and so you can respond as well.
All right, thank you.
With that, on the motion and second on the modified consent agenda, amended consent agenda, Mr. Reynolds, read that into the public record if you would be so kind, thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, these are the consent agenda items for 6 April of 2021. 4A1 approves the City Council meeting minutes for 16 March of 2021. 4A2 adopts Resolution R 2021 TAC 050, which declares official intent regarding the reimbursement of expenditures with the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city for the Canterbury Commons City Infrastructure Improvements. 4A3 adopts Resolution Number R 2021 TAC 051, which amends Resolution R 2018 TAC 011 and R 2019 TAC 040 regarding an inter fund loan for advance of certain costs and connections with TIFF District Number 19. 4A4 adopts Resolution R 2021 TAC 049, which certifies assessments for delinquent sewer and storm drainage accounts from 1 July 2019 to 30 June 2020. It adds an administrative charge of $25 for collection with payable 2020 property taxes, and in addition, it writes off delinquent accounts less than $25. 4A5 approves a franchise agreement with Century Link terminating their cable franchise. 4A6 adopts ordinance Number 02021 TAC 007, which amends ordinance Number 607 by granting an extension to December 31, 2021, to the current franchise agreement with Northern State's Power Company doing business as Excel Energy. 4B1 approves a contract with Civic Rec to supply a parks and rec software solution for facility rentals and program registration. 4C1 adopts Resolution R 2021 TAC 044, which approves the application to the 2021 AARP Community Challenge Grant. 4C2 adopts Resolution R 2021 TAC 059, which approves the application to the 2021 Safe Routes to School Demonstration Project Technical Assistance Program. 4C3 adopts Resolution Number R 2021 TAC 060, which approves the final plat of Summerland Place, first edition. 4D1 declares property as surplus and authorizes its disposal. 4D2 accepts the 2021 Speed and Aggressive Driving Enforcement Grant. 4E1 approves a contract with Pipe Services Corporation for the 2021 Sanitary Sewer Televising Project for $32,090.56, and we are currently working on making sure everybody has the opportunity to watch that live. 4E2 adopts Resolution Number R 2021 TAC 057, which authorizes the annual maintenance for roadway seal coat, crack sealing, pavement markings, and fog sealing, and a portion of the 2021 Pavement Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $593,700 to be awarded as part of the 2021 South Metro Joint Powers Agreement. 4E3 adopts Resolution Number R 2021 TAC 035, which approves an application to the Lower Minnesota Collaborative Chloride Reduction Grant. 4E4 adopts Resolution Number R 2021 TAC 055, which establishes portions of Dean's Lake Boulevard, Dean's Lake Trail, Crossings Boulevard, and Hanson Avenue as municipal state aid streets. 4E5 adopts Resolution Number 2021 TAC 045, which approves the application to the 2021 Toral Annual Product Donation Program. 4E6 adopts Resolution Number 2021 TAC 058, which accepts a quote and awards a contract in the amount of $114,690.37 to St. Croix Recreation Fund Playgrounds Incorporated for the Timber Trails Park Playground Replacement Project. 4E7 adopts Resolution Number 2021 TAC 054, approving plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids for the SCADA Systems Upgrade Project. 4E8 adopts Resolution Number R 2021 TAC 056, which authorizes a cooperative maintenance agreement with Scott County for CSAH 17 Trail and Pedestrian Bridge Project. And finally, 4E9 approves a suspension of City Code Section 130.45 Noise Elimination and Prevention Subdivision C4, hourly restrictions on certain operations, and therefore allows Canterbury Crossing Project Contractor, SM Henniges, and their subcontractors to perform work from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturdays through the end of October 2021.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion for a modified consent and a second. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion on that. And with that, by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion passes, consent passes, a lot of good work there. Item number five, now I'd like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda tonight. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Is there anybody in attendance, Mr. Reynolds?
No, Mr. Mayor, it's just us.
And have we received any electronic communication in regard to an item not on the agenda?
We have not, sir.
Seeing none, then, let's move forward to item number six, business removed from consent. There was none, so we would move ahead, and I would entertain a motion to stand in recess for our Economic Development Authority Meeting. Counselor Contreras. Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority Meeting.
Counselor Contreras.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion, further discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion stands approved, passes, we stand in recess. Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I call to order the April 6, 2021 Economic Development Authority Meeting. And could staff please note the role? And number two is approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Whiting, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, okay, there's been a motion by Whiting and a second by Contreras to approve the agenda. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Mr. Whiting.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
President Brennan.
Aye. Number three is the consent business, and on the consent business is the EDA minutes and the amendment to inter fund loan resolution for River Bluff Development. Counselor Contreras?
Make a motion to approve consent business.
Is there a second, Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
There's a motion by Contreras and second by Mars to approve the consent. Is there any question?
Madam President?
Yep.
Madam President, Matt Lehman, does the resolution for the inter fund loan under the Economic Development Authority, does the changes on the council agenda have any merit on this agenda? The motion was, resolution had the wrong number or something.
Yep. Mr. Kurski, can you answer that?
They do not.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions regarding the consent business? Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Mr. Whiting.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
President Brennan.
Aye. Number four is the EDA bill list. Is there any questions regarding the bill list? Seeing none, none. Number five is adjourned to April 20. Is there a motion to do so?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Whiting, I'd make a motion to adjourn to April 20, 7:00 p.m.
There's been a motion?
Madam Chair, second.
Second by Contreras. Is there any questions or comments? Can I have their all call, please?
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Mr. Whiting.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
President Brennan.
Aye. We stand adjourned at 7:17 p.m.
We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for April 6, 2021. We have just completed our EDA portion of our meeting, and we will resume, we are back on 9A1, the 2020 Preliminary Financial Results and Year End. And Nate Reinhardt will present, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I wanted to provide an update on financial results and go through some of the financial highlights for 2020. I'll be spending a little more time than I usually do with my normal monthly reports and going through a lot of numbers, but hopefully you'll find it reassuring and beneficial as we get closer to next year's budget cycle. Our audit will take place at the end of this month, so all these numbers are prior to that audit and subject to change. And following my presentation, I'll ask for council consideration of a transfer of available general fund balance to the CIF Fund. Beginning with the city's general fund, I have provided preliminary drafts of the general fund's balance sheet and budget to actual statement within the council packet. The general fund has positive operating results prior to transfers of 2.5 million compared to 3.3 million in 2019. Council did approve a one-time transfer of 835,000 at the end of last year from the general fund to pay off debt service early. And then similar to the prior year, the city has committed a portion of billing permit revenue. This is based on a percentage of open building permits at year end, so it represents the portion of billing permit revenue received in 2020 that coincided with reviews and inspections that occur the following year. Using the same formula as the previous year, we adjust that committed amount by 484,000, making that amount available for other uses. These items netted with the positive operating results and changes in the payable receivable balances provide an estimated net increase in unassigned fund balance of 2.4 million. The city does have a fund balance policy that targets a fund balance of 35% to 50% of the following year's expenditures. So preliminary, we're at 55.5%, which equates to about 1.65 million above that 50% threshold. The positive amount shown on the previous slide is primary result of revenues. Here are the significant budget variances from the original 2020 adopted budget. Significant budget variances in comparison to the original include 3.4 million of intergovernmental revenue, which is primarily coronavirus relief funds, 1.4 million in licenses and permits. Building permits included 165 single-family homes, and the larger permits include Churney Industries, Scott County Government Center remodel, Greystone, Shakopee Flats, and KEB America. 400,000 miscellaneous revenue, primarily investment income. And taxes were under budget by about 300,000 in total. We do budget to collect 100% of what we levy. And then for various reasons, that collection rate always ends up being a little bit under. In comparison, for 2020, we're at 98.4%, which is actually up from the previous year and similar to 2018, so it's a pretty normal year for that. And charges for services came in at about 1.5 million below our original budget expectations. We are under in the SPUC pilot fee, police contractual services, private engineering fees, and parking recreational revenues. On the expense side, general fund expenses were under the original budget by about 258,000. Culture and recreational expenses were under by about half a million as a result of COVID-19 programming reductions. Public works by about 106,000, and then public safety, which includes police and fire, were over the original budget by about 335,000 as a result of changes to the fire staffing model. Looking at recreational facilities, in total, Sand Venture had a net operation, operating cost of 139,000, down from 150,000 the previous year. The Ice Arena had an operating cost of about 187,000 compared to 29,000. And the community center had an operating cost of 1.23 million compared to about 577,000 the previous year. I do think it's important to note that all three of these facilities do fund on an annual basis their future building and equipment needs, so those amounts are within these numbers that are on the slide. For capital project and internal service funds, there's certainly a lot of activity that flows through each one of these funds. They all do serve the same purpose of planning and providing for capital needs. I think the snapshot of the change in annual cash balance can provide kind of a quick assessment of where we're at with these funds. We are seeing a decrease in cash balance in the CIF Fund and the Tree Replacement Fund. The 2.3 million balance itself for the Capital Improvement Fund is relatively small in comparison to what we have programmed here in the future years out of this fund. On the flip side, we did see cash increases in all our internal service funds, which would indicate that we're keeping up with those needs. The next slide shows the two larger utility funds the city operates, which are sanitary sewer and storm drainage. This shows the comparison of customer revenues, operating income, and cash balance from the previous year. The decline in customer revenues, operating income, and cash balance in the sanitary sewer fund would lead me to believe that we'll likely be exploring an increase in customer rates within the next budget cycle. I do believe we do have healthy cash balances for both these utilities. If you look at the storm drainage fund, the large decrease in cash here was a result of inter fund advance with Enclave, the Enclave TIFF District for that project, which will eventually be paid with tax increment revenues. Just a few other items to note, significant capital investments were made during the year, a total of 16.9 million, which includes the 12th Avenue Trail, Unbridled, the larger 2020 Street Reconstruction Project. Additionally, the city received 1.7 million in developer contributed infrastructure and replaced 23 pieces of equipment. On the debt service side, we retired 1,750,000 of principal on previously issued bonds, and then issued 8.165 million in new bonds for the Canterbury Commons TIFF, which again will be repaid with future tax increments. In total, we had an investment gain of 2 million, made up of interest income, which was a slight increase from the previous year, despite the dramatic shift down in interest rates and an unrealized gain. However, as I mentioned in a previous presentation, you can expect this amount to be significantly lower when we have this conversation next year. At the end of the year, the city and EDA owned about a half a million in assets for sale, or land, which is land for sale. We categorized one additional property as land held for sale, which is 600 Canterbury Road, which was part of a right-of-way acquisition. While it might not be developable as by itself, we do believe it could be combined with other parcels in that area. And then in 2020, we sold parcels as part of the Riverfront and then the MinDOT parcels. So getting to the point where I'm asking for the general fund transfer, this slide shows the projected cash deficit fund, or the cash deficit in the CIF Fund at the end of this year, so the end of 2021, of about 2.5 million. The city, if the city council supports the addition of the Gateway Monuments, it puts the funding needed at roughly 2.6 million. We are proposing a resolution tonight to transfer available general fund balance to the Capital Improvements Fund, which has been a practice that we've done in the past years, where we've identified available balance and used it for one-time purposes or putting towards capital projects. If the transfer is approved tonight, it would still leave 50% of unassigned fund balance within the If the transfer is approved tonight, it would still leave fifty percent of unassigned fund balance within the general fund. We did program in our cash flows as part of our discussion, C I P discussions last year and our budget discussion last year, four million bond sale that could close the gap that we have. I think with the transfer, if approved tonight, it'll temporarily bridge the funding gap, but when you look at what's programmed in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, we still have a funding deficit. Within the resolutions that we've had for a lot of our, our street projects that we've, we've done in the past year, we've added reimbursement language that would allow us to complete the projects and then reimburse ourselves through bond proceeds for up to three years after the expenses. So ultimately, this gives us some, some flexibility on, on if and when we decide to move forward with a bond issue, so that'll be something we continue to monitor and maybe later this year or even next year, whenever it's appropriate, maybe bring a bond sale forward to help close that gap. So again, we're asking for a transfer of one point seven million from the general fund to the capital improvements fund. Our audit will happen here in a couple of weeks. And then we'll have the audit complete and the presentation likely at the end of June. So I'll, I'll open up, up to questions in just, I just amend in here, but if I had to sum up our financial results, I would say the city should be really proud of its financial condition. We continue to have strong cash and fund balance positions within the general fund and our other funds. And there's nothing overly concerning within our, our financial statements or any, any financial issue that we're not addressing. So we made it through two thousand twenty on the positive side, despite the pandemic, and we should be in a great position moving forward.
Nate, thank you very much. Questions of staff? I have a question. I just want to make sure that my thought process is right here. So general, on the very, one of your very first slides, you said general fund unassigned balance at the end of the year preliminary was fifty-five point five. And then you're suggesting that we transfer some funds to the capital improvement, and then that would bring us down to the top end of our policy at fifty percent. Is that correct?
That is correct. So our, within the fund balance policy, we're targeting thirty-five to fifty percent of the following year's expenditures, so for the, at the end of two thousand twenty, it would represent thirty-five to fifty percent of what we're spending in two thousand twenty-one, what we're spending this year.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Lehman?
Thanks, Mayor. No, I actually read it and I get it.
Thank you. Other counselors comment on this? I think given the pandemic and where we were a year ago, just heading into this and where we are today, pretty resilient community we have and it's showing up in the numbers and I think using that conservative approach says a lot about our, our community in our, in our city. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Nate, you talked about possibly a bond sale in the future. Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to move past that fifty percent mark to forty-eight percent mark to avoid future need to tap into a bond sale?
I can comment, make a few different comments on that. Right now, it's not necessarily a terrible time to issue, issue a bond with interest rates as low, low as they are. And if you continue to look, even with this one point seven million transfer, I mean, I, I still think if you'd like to see what's programmed within that fund, we're still probably short. I think at least by doing our reimbursement resolutions, it gives us some more time to see if we have other funding opportunities or other things that may come up. So that, that could be a potential solution to probably or possibly bridge some of that gap, but I, I think at some point, the amount of projects is going outweigh what we're able to provide through the general fund.
Mayor?
All right, thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. A thought on lowering the, the amount that we carry in the fund. In the past, we've been, you know, forty-four, forty-five percent. So we, you know, to Counselor Whiting, we, we actually probably could do that, but here's one thing to think about first. We know that during two thousand twenty with the, the pandemic and everything that that threw at us, you know, we, we, we see our community center with non-reimbursable revenue losses of almost a million dollars. And you really don't know where we're headed quite yet completely. Hopefully, we're going to get through this soon completely. But we don't know with all the variance and everything else, and you don't know what the federal or state government might do to help the cities. So that makes the argument for having the fund balance on the high side because you really don't, you know, you want to cover yourself just in case. If it was a perfect world, normal times, I would, I would absolutely agree that we could lower that to forty-five, shifting more into the C I P. But I think there's too much uncertainty to put yourself in that position. Thank you, Mayor.
Nate, thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lehman, for that. Appreciate that. No, I understand where we are. I think it's prudent to move this money and stay away from that cap. So with that, I would make a motion to adopt resolution number R two thousand twenty-one dash zero five two, a resolution approving a transfer of one point seven million from the general fund to the capital improvements one.
Have a motion on the table. Counselor Brennan? Counselor Brennan, seconds. Further discussion? I think this is all about balance. And I think moving some money there to, to move even more, given the environment, I do, you know, I do give that the best use of capital here. We have some pretty low interest rates. I think that bodes us well. And creating that, that balance and keeping our fund balances high, bonding a little bit allows flexibility at low interest rates, so as we move forward. Those are my comments. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Hi.
Counselor Brennan.
Hi.
Counselor Whiting.
Hi.
Counselor Lehman.
Hi.
Mayor Mars.
Hi. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to nine V one. Trail signage and wayfinding concept review. Peggy Sue will present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I just want to give a quick kind of refresh on the signage and wayfinding and kind of talk about some of the options. There we go. Thank you, Michael. This is something. I'm getting quite a lot of feedback. I'm not sure if anyone else. Okay. This is something that you all have seen before, but bringing it back, kind of using your feedback to revise these concepts and clean them up a bit. So if you'll go to the next, again, just as an overview, as part of the Parks Trails and Recreation Master Plan, we have kind of one of the big ideas from that was rebranding the Upper Valley Niche Way to the Verling Greenway and using that as kind of a connected trail system throughout the community. It is such a beautiful trail system, so creating some better signage because there are some gaps in it as well as adding things like mile markers and other signage that would make it a little bit easier to navigate. So the concepts that I'm going to show you have been a bit revised, and if you'll go to the next slide, Mr. Kerski. I just want to start with kind of grounding us here. This was the entryway monument signs that were shown at the end of last year and kind of this body decided it was something we'd really like to implement. They're shown also in the comprehensive plan. And there was a lot of really great discussion around this. Again, this is casota stone in that kind of the rock on the side and bottom, and then Corten steel, so it's kind of a like rusted aged looking steel. It lights up. It's a really beautiful sign, and I think there was a lot of great consensus from the city council that we really liked the look of this. And then we had looked at the signage and wayfinding concepts that I brought forward, and they were really different. So what I wanted to do was kind of bring those two concepts together to kind of create a signage and wayfinding package that really kind of blended and meshed with that entryway signage and also create a little bit more timeless look. So this first concept has all Corten steel. It incorporates some of the elements that the council really liked, like the eagle. It might not be eagle, but some sort of iconography that indicates that you're on the Verling Greenway. It's got kind of that sharp edge kind of slant similar to the entryway signage. And then all of these, I won't explain every single one of the signs, but they're different signs that throughout the trail will let you know what you might be coming on, show maps as well as for newer parks, we would start to replace the park signage with this top sign that doesn't have the casota stone. The second concept is really similar, but a little bit more colorful. So the concept that the council kind of had consensus on liking was like this really bright, super colorful blue concept. So this kind of adds in those elements with elements of blue steel on some of the wayfinding signage and a bit more colorful version of the logo, but still has that Corten steel, so that kind of rusted antique looking steel with some of the casota stone. So tonight, I'm just looking for your feedback on if you prefer one of these two concepts to the other. And then we would move forward with kind of finalizing the signage and wayfinding plan. So with that, I can take any questions.
Peggy Sue, thank you very much. Questions of staff? And maybe we'll just start on, just go back on the monument sign. Just start there and take comments on that, and then we'll move to the wayfinding. I'm a big fan of these monument signs. I like how it incorporates the, the stone. I know our community has tried several of these in the past and I'd like to see more of them than, than less because it seems like we get started and then we stop and then ten years pass and we have a different design and want to try to carry a theme here and I do like the, the look and simplicity of, of this new design here. Those are my comments. Other comments on monument signs? Counselor Brennan?
I, I like the lighted background on the sign, especially if you're going down one oh one and you're like in the middle of the night and it gets so dark down in there. So it'd be nice to see something that you're coming upon telling you that you're getting to Shakopee and that you're, you've arrived. I do have, I do wonder if the, the steel portion of the sign is cleanable and if there's any damage to it or graffiti on it.
Yes. Thank you for that, Councilmember Brennan. The, all the signs, both the monument sign and the signs for the signage trail finding will be coated with an anti-graffiti coating to prevent graffiti or damage. And then they, it's, it's essentially like stainless steel, so it should be pretty cleanable if it were to get, you know, damaged or, you know, graffiti. I think that's something that Public Works would have no problem cleaning off.
That's all, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as this monument in particular, I, I agree with Councilmember Brennan with the lighted background. That image looks pretty cool. I like this. It's that stone image. It's not quite that shock of a brick color, but I think that wouldn't go well really. I think this brownish color or this rust color is, is close and fits well with the casota limestone there. And I do like the fact that we have some dimensions there with the, the guy there, so we know that we can actually read the sign before we put it up. But are, were you going to move on to the other signs unless you want?
Well, just try to get some input here on the, on these monument signs first, and then we'll come back and do the, do the wayfinding. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. My grandson fixed my computer.
All right.
Actually, the son did. My thought is there's a couple of different monument sign, two monument sign options. I don't think we're out anything by selecting more than one, getting pricing on both because pricing and what we spend does matter. We just heard from the capital improvement fund position, so I, I don't think it harms us at all and gives us a lot more options and leeway by pricing out a couple of different kinds or both different kinds and seeing really where we're at once we know what, what the actual costs are.
Mr. Mayor, this is Administrator Reynolds.
Yes.
There's actually only one monument sign at this point, and that's what you're looking at now. We do have two different sets of the other greenway marking signs, but the monument sign itself, this is essentially what we have.
Thought I saw one in here, Mayor, that didn't have the brick or the rock on it, or is, or that's broken down and how it's constructed, maybe?
Well, those are in the wayfind signing, so Mr. Reynolds is correct. There is only one monument sign. We're looking at adding several of these at entrance points into our community. This is significantly larger than our current signs that are tough to read and better, this is better to scale here, but you know, they're, in this concept of a monument sign there, you know, wouldn't be marking a trail. It would be marking the entrance to the community.
Okay, so what I'm talking about is the, like the Verling Greenway sign that, okay, so that's where I would go with both options to get some good pricing on where it puts us.
Thank you. Counselor Contreras on the monument sign?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, actually, I'm just going to echo what has been said. I, I love the idea that it's big and compared to the gentleman on there. I like the lights. The light is to me is, it's brilliant. I love the idea. And that's it. I mean, everything's been said. I do like the color contrast. It's perfect. Very nice. Thank you.
Well, I think we've built enough consensus on the monument sign here and see where we can go and get some pricing on that. Let's move forward to the wayfinding signing concepts, and there are two. And maybe Peggy Sue, you, you kind of mentioned that one is more tapered than the other one. One has more color on this one here. They're very close, but they're, they do offer some, some options. I like that it's carrying through the, at least the stone edge, stone part of it from our monument sign. I think that would, would be a good flow into the community as you're on a trail. And those are my comments. Other comments on either one of these concepts on wayfinding? Counselor Lehman wants to look at both of them. Other comments? Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I know last time we saw it, I was very much in favor of the blue. But after I see it and after I see the, the monument one, I'd like to keep that simplicity, that, that same neutral color tone flow. So to me, I like the, the simple one, not the, without the blue, but you know, in my personal opinion, I just like the, the neutral color tone that just flows. It's my opinion.
Right. And I guess we go, go back to a comment that at our last meeting, and we discussed this, Counselor Lehman, where we were talking about having maybe a map on, on one so that when you're in the trail, you kind of have a know where you are, and that's right there where Peggy Sue, and I believe that's on both these con- concepts. I do think that's important. On, on, because once you get in and if you're a, a high On on, cause once you get in and if you're a a hiker in any way, you kind of want to know how far am I, how far to the end, you know, kind of a, you know, where you're at. So I think those are important. Other comments, uh? Councilor Brennan or Councilor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Councilor Whiting. A couple of comments. Um, first of all, on the on the uh page we got, they're both marked as a scheme four B. So it was a little confusing for me which one was which or they're all the same, but um, I do like uh the one without the blue. I like the tapered look to some of the pillars rather than the just uh, you know, straight up and down. Rectangular looking ones. And of course, I do like the the blend of the colors. You mentioned the eagle and one thought that came out was up trying to figure out a logo that we could put in there and the S shape we have in our current logo uh that forms the river in our logo would be something I think would may might be kind of cool on some of those. Just a thought, but I do prefer uh the one without the blue as well.
Okay. I guess we do have pu- part of our city logo down in the lower left of uh of these that has a little bit of that wave action. So Councilor Brennan, comment on this?
Um, I think the current page um better um matches with the larger sign, the this, the one that goes into the city. Um, so I like that. Um, I think is T one B. I think that's the number on there, the larger one. Is that that's at the major street crossings? Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Brennan, that would be at um anytime that the Verling Greenway crosses a street. Um, such as like by the community center is a great example where you're going from Lions Park to that connection across behind the community center to indicate to a driver that you would be seeing perhaps people crossing the trail there.
Is there any way to have the Verling Greenway um on that sign lit? So that people recognize that people are perhaps are crossing the street um and that that's a trail crossing. Um, I don't know what the pricing would be on lit or nonlit, but you know, it it would better define that there's a trail there at the street.
Yeah, Councilmember Brennan, thank you so much. I I think that's something we've discussed, but isn't shown in the concept level drawings is perhaps a solar component that would allow um and the monument sides, both T one B and T one A to have some degree of lighting.
That's um my only comment. I think that, you know, trail signs should not be real glaringly obvious. They should be in the um at at the surroundings, but you also want to see them um and know that you're coming up and up to them if you're you know, in the middle of a of a gap, middle of the signs and and you know that you want to, oh, there is a sign. I know where I'm going to go next. So um, so I don't want it to have a blend in too much. I want it to be um obvious that it's there too. I I so I thi- I think that uh that would um, I think the um option one it would be evident.
So after hearing from all of you, I I see that there's a consensus on the I guess the wayfinding signing that we're seeing that's in front of us right now with the non-blue. It still carries the maps. It still carries the 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 flavor, the idea, the identity of the monument signs. And I think that's good. I I do get concerned about lighting and I appreciate your comments, Councilor, but I I look if this is gonna be at every crossing, um, you know, I live on the just adjacent to this trail and uh you know, the Verling and and Spencer. You know, it it goes quite a ways. So if we add, you know, power and lighting aspects at every one of those uh crossings, it it may have a cost aspect that um pushes uh drives us a little higher. So I do appreciate that the concept of thinking about that they would be lighting, but I'd be concerned about the cost. Councilor uh Lehman?
My my concern has always been and still is that where we put these at the road, that they're set back far enough so that drivers and pedestrians. So if you come up to this, you're not right at the road so that you can come out from behind and the driver doesn't see you. You know, I want it set back enough off the road so that when you're done reading it and you start to the road that there's a space between this and the road to where the pedestrian can be visibly seen from the driver.
Some separation, right?
Right. But if you can do solar lighting and there's no wiring, uh, you know, that's that's a possibility too. I, you know, you can put that in as an optional type to see where the prices are.
Okay, other uh last comments on this? Thanks for bringing this forward, uh Peggy Sue, and I know we've seen it twice. Um, do you have enough direction from staff? Or from council?
Yes, that's excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Mars. And um, we will work to put together as a next step kind of a map of where these signs will go and the cost for them. Um, we have a preliminary cost opinion from Confluence right now, but um now that we've selected a sign design, we can bring that in more detail the next time you you all see it.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moving forward then to item number ten A fifty uh, ten A, which is our fifteen year CIP and pavement management program. And I know we've been asking for this for quite a while and here it is. Uh, Steve will present. Welcome.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, before Steve uh
Oh, I apologize. Yes, Mr. Reynolds.
This essentially has two different parts that we're looking at, the pavement management plan and the draft fifteen year capital improvement plan. The draft capital improvement plan that is before you is for form. Please don't get into the numbers. Don't look at the numbers. The numbers that are there uh probably have the opportunity to change between now and then. You will be seeing this as the draft with the numbers in place, I believe. When are we gonna take a look at that, Steve?
Um, May-ish through the CIP process.
But it comes to council in June, isn't that correct?
We start, we start in May and June and July and
Okay, the draft CIP will be reviewed by City Council in July. So um again, it's just for form. Uh, so what we're looking for is if you if you have some uh problems with the way it's in the form it's in, that's what we're looking for. So, thank you. Mr. Lillah.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Steve, welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, this is a work session, so feel free to jump in and interrupt me. Um, so I'll first gonna start off and talk about our pavement management and then Nate Reinhardt is gonna jump in and um, talk a little bit more about the cash flow and the funding of a long-term CIP and what that looks like. So the first thing I wanted to talk about would be the actual um, the pavement management system. And up until the past couple of years, I would say our system um was a little more uh old school. Uh, doing what, uh, you know, not necessarily data-driven, but uh just a good field evaluation and um, this is, you know, getting a good inventory of uh what what the condition was and uh and really just, you know, programming the different projects, again, just not data-driven. So now we have over the past three years, we've um, went throughout the community and a hundred sixty mile plus of roadway, we've we've rated and ranked uh given a pavement condition index to all of the different segments of streets. So now we truly have a dated, driven, systematic uh method of inspecting and rating the conditions of the roadway um citywide. Um, so that's generally new to the city. Um, while we've had a couple of different um pavement management programs, um they've never been used to their fullest that we can tell. Uh, so now we have migrated to uh a really good program. And when we go to this data-driven type of program, it's easier to optimize the different timing of the strategies um and adjustments to costs and life cycling. And really to uh look at different iterations of um what an investment can look like and will look like uh to the um average pavement condition index. And that's what I want to look at next. And then ultimately, what does all this mean? It it helps us to use the this is the basis for the pavement part of our capital improvement plan. Um, so that's why we have a pavement management index. So when you look at this graph right here, uh, the first thing I'd draw to the attention would be um, just in general, the rating of the pavement. It's rated from zero, which is the absolute worst. You almost don't want to drive on it to one hundred, which is basically a brand new road. Um, everything on this map that is green is seventy or above. Um, in a condition of seventy or above, and I'll show you some examples, is actually a a pretty darn good pavement rating. So when I see all this green, um, I'm actually pretty excited. And even though there's some red on there, which is generally the worst, that's not so bad because we actually have those red segments queued up for reconstruction. So all in all, um, I would say uh the Mike Hallender and Jim Henderson, they did an absolute fabulous job of pavement manage um in the past. So the condition of the roadways is in pretty good shape in Shakopee. Um, so on the next slide, um, I drilled down a little bit, uh, and uh this is generally the downtown area. Um, you see those road, the red roadways, they're a pavement condition index of zero to nine, and that's right by Unleavy Drive, right by our uh Atwood area. Uh, that's right by our River Bluff Shakopee Flats area. And we all know those roads, well, right now, half of them are tore up. But they're about the worst of the worst in the city. Um, so that's the red road. It's condition of, you know, zero to nine. And then uh then then there's the range from, you know, increments of ten. There's another ro- a red road in there. Um, and I want to talk about that one a little more. It's Atwood. There's a why is that road red? Well, it indeed is shot. Um, but but that's the importance of having a good systematic pavement management. So we don't have those roadways that fall through the cracks. Um, so we don't have a wood duck. So we, you know, so they don't get to that level. Um, and we do better maintenance strategies. The next slide, I just want to step through a couple different, what what the roadways look like with the different pavement um ratings. So this, this is Third Avenue, West of Prairie Street. Um, it was reconstructed in twenty sixteen and then we, you know, quickly turned around and we crack sealed it and chip seal coated. You know, this is, this is one of the better of the better of the best roads in the city. This, this road is solid. And it it has a, e- even after five years, it still has a pavement condition index PCI of ninety-nine. And there's hardly a crack in this road. It's, I'm really impressed. Um, little to no distress at all in this road. So that's, that's good. Um, a next category would be seventy to seventy-nine. Um, so this is still in pretty good shape. This is Main Street, north of Shakopee Avenue. It's a rating of seventy-seven. Um, originally constructed in two thousand seven. It's been cracked sealed and then seal coated. You can see that the chip seal is wearing off a little bit. Um, that's mostly because of our snowplows. Um, and then there's um slight uh pretty low severity in in the cracking in the roadway. Um, so still a pretty good, pretty good roadway. You know, the next maintenance strategy here, it's not gonna be a mill and overlay. It's probably gonna be, you know, in a few years, it'll probably be another chip seal coat. It's in that good a shape. Um, now we start falling off here a little bit. This is Spencer Street at Third Avenue. And again, interrupt me if I'm babbling here too much or going too fast. Um, but this is Spencer Street. It's uh the PCI is sixty-seven. Um, so this road was constructed in nineteen ninety-three and it's been cracked sealed and seal coated and cracked sealed again. Um, it's not in that bad a shape. It's a sixty-seven, so it's definitely on the decline. Um, you know, this will be a candidate for a mill and overlay in the coming years. Um, so the distresses, uh chip seals moderately worn. You can see our snowplows whack the crown of the road off. They're pretty good again. Um, and we have, you can see the cracks. We have them cracked sealed and we have areas that are patched, et cetera, et cetera. So this road's on the decline. Um, the next road, um, not a great picture, um, but this is Atwood Street at Atwood Circle. So this PCI is twenty-eight. Uh, if you stand and don't look at it very closely, it looks like a good chip seal road, but if you look closer, um, the PCI of a twenty-eight, it's it's because uh we have um, high severity of block cracking and linear cracking and it's starting to alligator crack and the potholes are developing. So this road is gonna fall off um in in pretty short order. Um, one more example. And uh, you know, another worst of the worst roads here. That was that little segment of Atwood for some reason buried in our um, you know, our historic older part of town. We have a nineteen eighty-two road that uh just one block. It was uh, it's in heavy wear and patches and potholes are severe. So uh, this is what we need to try to avoid in this community is uh to have these outliers like this. Um, but this one needs to get queued up and uh a full-depth reconstruction on this one coming up. Um, so the next slide.
Steve, can I ask a, I I really like these pictures to go with the ratings to look at different streets in our community, but certainly like uh Spencer is one of our main, main thoroughfares compared to uh Third Avenue or Atwood. You know, do we take into account how much uh average trips occur on these roads as we rate them? Is that a factor in your scale?
Um, Mayor and council members, uh as far as the the PCI index goes, um, not necessarily. Um, it's really about the condition of the pavement. Um, obviously, it's affected. That condition is by the the larger amount of traffic, most specifically truck traffic that drives on that roadway. But we don't, you know, in our current system, I we we don't typically give priority necessarily to a Spencer. Um, it's not saying we could and I and I would say that going forward, I would have, we should have chip seal coated this roadway already um for the second time. So what 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 I would say is we're going to use this system to be more proactive and more sys- systemic uh for the for citywide, so we don't have um, roadways, you know, this is still a pretty solid roadway, but the aesthetics of it is is falling off quite a bit and uh, you know, a very economical chip seal coat will will better extend this life and of the pavement. And that's what this next graph will show, Mayor and council members, is
Thank you.
Is um, so the very first line, it's it starts out as green and then it goes red all the way, all the way down to the bottom. So the left is the pavement condition. The very top on the left is very good, which is a hundred and very poor down at zero. So if we construct a pavement and then the the bottom axis is time. So if we construct a brand new road, that's generally the degradation curve or the pavement performance curve. Um, you'll see, you know, initially it it's pretty solid roadway, but then it it really it starts to to fall off if we don't do any maintenance. And then you get to a point, you know, in the right below at the bottom of fair where you either let that roadway fall into oblivion or you do a major rehab like a full-depth reconstruction or mill and overlay. Um, but that's not a a good way to extend your pavement life because those major rehabilitations are very costly. Um, so what we try to do is when it starts falling off in the very good category, um, that's why when we started off uh on Third Avenue, I said we we reconstructed it in twenty sixteen and then within a a couple of years, we did we did crack sealing and we did the chip seal coat. So that's what those uh it falls off in the green and then takes a spike straight up. That's when we do those um very economical pavement management strategies to keep it up in that very good condition as long as we can, because it's very economical to do that. Um, so Spencer, it's fallen off a little bit, but I, you know, I think we can do that that next blue vertical line where we do a another chip seal coat to extend that before we do a mill and overlay. We have to look at it a little closer, but um, what we see here is like a crack seal chip seal coat and then a crack seal chip seal coat. And then it falls off into the good category. That's when we would do a a maintenance strategy such as a mill and overlay or quasi pavement rehab. And then it it climbs up pretty good pavement performance again. And then we then we'd look at doing another chip seal coat and then ultimately a full-depth reconstruction. And then we, then we'd look at doing another chip seal coat and then ultimately a full depth reconstruction. So we try to keep it up and flat in the very good, the good category. Because that's where we see the best economies of our pavement investment. So generally, that's what that chart defines. And that's what we use as a basis for our investment strategy.
Excellent. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions for our engineer. If a person followed this strategy, what is the anticipation for the street life? And I understand that, you know, neighborhood road is going to last longer because it's lightly traveled compared to a collector. So what would be the ideal longevity time under the perfect strategy?
Mayor and council members, that is a, that's a phenomenal question. And notice I didn't put, put years on that bottom axis for a purpose. The expectation, you know, as, as, as all of you witness, we have a variation in our, our roadway life expectancy. I mentioned Wood Duck earlier, that barely made it 20 years before we had to do a full depth reconstruction. But then when we, when we build the roads with a, with a bigger front investment, we can get roadways to last 30, 35 years by keeping them up in the, the blue and green and the very good and good section there. So I'm very confident I've seen good roads last for, for 30 plus years. Again, they, they have to be built correctly. You go around town and look at some of the roadways where we didn't use a two foot sand section. This, the roadway that we're rehabbing this summer in the Whispering, Whispering Oaks. Can't remember if I'm getting the name right, but, but that's a, that's a result of, of not, not using the better design up in that neighborhood. So it's, we're trying to bridge the gaps. We don't have to do that major reconstruction before it's even 20 years old. So short answer is good pavement, we can get up to 30, 30 plus years.
Follow up, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The second question I had was, have we considered different chip seals for lightly used residential compared to heavy used collectors? And the reason I brought it up, and I brought it up to you once before, I noticed when they did 101 First Avenue through Shakopee, Scott County uses purple looking chip seal. And I think you told me at the time it was, it's a size, like it's purple in color because it's eighth inch or whatever that means. But that stuff seems to be like really solid. And do we want to use something like that on our heavier collector routes? And then a different something on our residential, or do we just use the same on everything?
Mayor and council members, that's a, that's a really good question. We use a couple of different strategies. So the, so the difference between what the county does generally, what the county does on their, on their major roadways is it's a, it's a different chip. It's a different aggregate. It's a larger diameter aggregate. And typically you're going to see them on the, the higher speed, higher volume traffic roadways. When we, when we use those larger aggregates on our residential streets, the residents, they don't look as favorable on them. They're, they're, they're too coarse of an aggregate and they're just, they're too rough, too rough riding, too loud. Maybe your experiences are different with them, but that's just the general sense of them. I, I would say though, that our smaller diameter, what we use is a trap rock. It's a very durable, smaller aggregate, but, but we are seeing pretty good performance with that. You go look at 101 or, yeah, 101 that the county chip seal coated a couple of years ago. Maybe it was even last summer and that got pounded by some of the trucks going over the bridge and back and forth from Canterbury. But it, that chip seal coat didn't hold up too good. And ours, I would say when we look at ours on Eagle Creek Boulevard in the same pathway, ours actually held up a little better than theirs did. One, one other variation that we do on the higher volume, higher speed roadways is, is we will go, we'll chip seal coat it. And then we fog seal right over top of the chip seal. And we can do that on our higher volume roadways be- because we don't have the driveways. We, it's hard to, we like that because it seals the, the chips and we, we have a lesser amount of chip loss when we do the fog seal. But it's very difficult to do that in the neighborhoods with all the driveways with the tracking of the fog seal that we would see. So, so we feel we have a good balance. We're, you know, we're open to change, but I, I think we have the right combination right now. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
The next slide is, it shows the, a little technical, but it shows a little, the different maintenance strategies that we have. We have, starting from the bottom, we do, we have a crack seal and chip seal coat. They generally go together. They don't have to, you know, we'll do a chip seal coat and then a couple of years, if it starts cracking, we, we do want to get in there and keep those cracks sealed. And then we have the more in-depth pavement rehabilitation where, where we'll go do, it's still a, it's a glorified chip seal coat. And this is a newer strategy, but we want to go in and fix some of those smaller areas that have started to crack and alligatored and do a chip seal coat over the top. So that's a new strategy that we're using to, to extend the life. And then there's the mill and overlay, the traditional mill and overlay. And then we get to the ultimate full depth recon, full depth pavement reconstruction. And buried in those tables, there's one column, it's unit cost. And we have the different unit costs of a seal coat is, it's like 12 cents per square foot, all the way up to the full depth recon, which is $7.25 a square, square foot. And we will update those costs annually based on the, the bids and costs that we're getting. So it's pretty dynamic. And again, it, it shows just how much those, those, the seal coats and those maintenance strategies are so cost effective for us to do. The next couple of slides, I have three examples of a different investment strategy and what that does with our average PCI over a 15 year period. So right now, we generally invest in our pavement, which includes our capital improvement projects and our operating budget, the chip seal coat. We have, you approved tonight, almost $600,000 in our maintenance strategies with our, with our chip seal coat and crack seal and pavement striping. So, but in general, we're spending about at an average of about $5 million in between the, the different pavement manage, management strategies that I mentioned. So this first one, right now, as we stand today, we, our PCI average, so it's a weighted average over the entire city of our city streets, is about a 74 to 75, which is, which is really good. There's a lot of data on this chart right here, so I don't, I don't mean to overwhelm you. But the top right chart, based on a $3 million annual investment, and we do include a 3% annual inflation factor for the 15 years. But if we invest 3 million annually, we see that the, the 74 PCI, it drops to about a 60 at the end of the 15 years. Based on the, you know, the available $3 million investment and, and looking at best where to put that money. One thing I wanted to point out also is in the bottom left chart, and again, there's a lot of information here. But if you look at the bottom left chart, right now you're seeing the blue. That's a, you know, percent of our maintenance strategies. A lot of it is overlay. But then you get into, you know, a few years down the road and all of a sudden, we're spending a lot of money putting it into, into the full depth reclamation projects. So why is that happening? That's a direct result of the growth of the city in the nineties. So a lot of those, those, those roads that were constructed in the nineties, they're coming of age for a full depth reconstruction. So, so that's why we're seeing a shift as we progress here over the next 15 years from mill and overlays to full depth reconstruction. So I wanted to point that out. And then the, the bottom right chart is just, is the PCI index seeing, you know, a decline with a $3 million investment annually. The next chart is basically a $5 million annually. And again, that's what I indicated, generally that's our investment strategy right now. And that's actually a, our recommend, our recommended strategy. So we're starting out at a 74, again, 74, 75 today. And over 15 years, it averages out about at a 70. And it's not declining to a 70 necessarily. Once we hit, you know, a few more years down the line here, it really stabilizes at a 70. So why are we at a 74 right now? And then all of a sudden we, we fall off a few points. I would say that's because in the last few years, we've had some major reconstructions, which really spiked a positive end result in our PCI index. Last year, we did a couple of big projects, the rural residential projects with a full depth reconstruction project. So, so we kind of spiked up in these last couple of years, but that's hard to maintain. So then if we look at the next chart, the next chart would show a $7 million annual investment. And again, we, the cost escalation, when we, when I say 7 million, that's today dollar. Over 15 years, that, that takes an incremental adjustment every year to, to maintain what I'm proposing here. The $7 million annual investment, so we start off at a 74 and you can see it increases to a, to a 78. And that progressively looks like it's increasing and not just leveling off. So to me, that, you know, a couple of pavement management, you just don't push a button and this is what you're going to do. It's an iterative process and it's not a perfect process. And I'll talk about a few of those nuances as well here. But the moral of the story with those three different examples, 3 million, 5 million, 7 million, is we're in that sweet spot right now. And I, I started out by saying, our past staff and our, you know, your, your investment through the city council has paid off and it's right at that sweet spot, if you will. I think we're doing a good job. It's maintaining a really good PCI index for the city. So some of those nuances I wanted to talk about, the next, the next.
Steve, before we just, I wanted to go back and I wanted to ask you about the, what we roughly have been doing lately at about 5 million. And on your middle slide there. And your rating goes from 74 to 70 and that's 15 years at 5 million. If I wanted to carry, as Counselor Lehman asked a question earlier that, you know, if you really, you know, if you keep that maintenance going a long time, you can get 30, 35 years out of a road. You know, keep good maintenance, obviously we, you know, even a homeowner, you got to keep your, do maintenance on your home. Otherwise it deteriorates and then it's actually a bigger expense. So I get that. But my question here on this, and I'm reading, this is a lot of data here, but if we were to extrapolate this out, 5 million to 30 years, are we going to see the same road rating roughly? I mean, is this, it's an annual maintenance thing as we move forward? Would we think that if this was 5 million for 30 years, that we would see those numbers at, after 30 years at 70?
Mayor and council members, this, this is not a perfect system. So I don't want to sit here and, and try to tell you I can predict some of these, these pavement lives. And that's purposely why I did not put year on that one chart. You know, because we have the whole gamut of pavements right now. Some, they're going to make it, we can barely get them to make it to 20, 25 years. And, you know, they're, they're just, you know, that's the fact of the matter at this point. Some of our newer pavements that we're building today with really good standards, I expect to get 30 to 35. So we can run a 30 year scenario here, but it gets difficult to predict, to predict in those 15 years out of, on that performance end of it. But we, we feel we have a, you know, we have a pretty good, pretty good flavor. You know, pavement management's been going around, going along for quite a while here. So, and, you know, just looking at some of our roads and their current performance, we, we feel that with this strategy that that sweet spot is sitting right at 70. And well, does that, can we, do we need to increase or lessen that investment? When we get to 16 to 30 years, I'm not too certain right now. More to come on that.
That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, question for you. When, when we use asphalt and blacktop, that's what works good for seal coating and chip sealing and stuff like that, where concrete, it doesn't embed down into concrete. So at what point do you save the money from the chip sealing and all them other maintenance things and switch over to concrete? And is concrete last longer? Where's the cost benefit? Where's your experience with the wear of concrete? And I looked at 21 and granted, you know, the, the feds and the state built that thing. You could probably land a Sherman tank on it at 100 miles an hour. Thing's got to be three fit, three feet thick, you know? Tell me about your experience with concrete pricing, longevity, wear issues and, and the savings of not doing all the other maintenance when you have concrete. Where's the balance? Or is that another topic?
I could talk for a couple of hours on this one, so I'm going to give you the short version. Let me see here. The short version would be, and not, not to be sarcastic, but tough to get developers to put two foot of sand in, let alone to have them put concrete pavement in. And my point is, is concrete pavement is pretty expensive, the upfront cost. No doubt, they're more durable, they last longer. In fact, when I was, when I worked for the city of Edina, there's a old, older, and I don't want to upset anyone by the terms I use, but there's about, off the top of my head, it was like 30% of the pavement in Edina was concrete pavement, I remember from working there. And then the, the rest of the, the 70% was bituminous. When we get down to the level of local roads, concrete pavement is difficult sometimes. In the, the maintenance part, it's tougher when you have utilities under, under the road to, if you have a water main break, to go remove that concrete pavement, it's, it's double the work. Now I'm giving you the long version. I would say that the short version is, is it's, it's tough to invest in concrete. And there's a reason communities don't necessarily do it. It's, it, it's expensive upfront. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Strategically, you want to use it where you know you need it. Where you're not going to be digging up utilities like we saw the county and the city use on the end of Fourth Avenue and 83 with the heavy truck turning movements and stuff like that. All right.
Yeah, and on, on the trunk highways, I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're looking at truck traffic, substantial truck traffic. And they're going 10 inches, 12 inches deep of concrete pavement. And, you know, that's where they look at, they do a real long-term projected cost. And they have a big formula on when to use bituminous pavement and concrete pavement and a whole warrant analysis for that. So, but the majority, the vast majority of communities in Minnesota are using bituminous pavement because of the cost.
Do we limit trucks? What streets, heavy trucks can drive on in the city?
Mayor and council members, loosely, I would say. We, we, we don't necessarily have an enforcement of the, the weight restrictions on our roadways. We're not, you know, our police department's not set up for it. So if we have an issue, we have to call in, basically the state highway patrol to assist with that. Spring weight limits, we do post them, the different weights. And, you know, most contractors are pretty good with us on that. We have a few outliers that we have to enforce, but we generally design our roadways, even our residential roadways to a nine or 10 ton design. So pretty stout design.
Do we have a map available for commercial semi rigs and stuff of where if they're coming through, we want them to go?
We, we certainly have a spring load weight restriction map. And I know I've seen a preferred route for the collectors and the arterials for truckers. Again, it's, it's preferred only. It's something that we simply don't, don't enforce. So we, we do have a map like that, but we, we don't necessarily advertise it. And maybe that is something that, you know, if, if we had a, a high, a large issue with cut through truck traffic on our residential streets, it's, it's definitely. it's, it's definitely something we should and would look at a little higher level. So if there is those things happening that, that I need to know about so we can react to it or be proactive, please sound off and let us know. Okay, I'm going, I'm going to, got a few more maps here I want to show you again. So I, I ended that, it's not just to push a button and this is what we're going to do. We have to look historically at, you know, we do look historically at when the pavement was constructed. So this map just generally shows what year the last major street reconstruction was done in the different areas on the different segment by year. So we have, you know, we have pavements dating back to, and I can't read it, mine's blurry, you know, eighties, you know. So the next, the next map shows the history of the mill and overlays. So we keep records of all of this to help us determine what the next maintenance strategy should be. And then we get into the proposed maps. We develop a proposed overlay map where we're going to do our mill and overlays. And then we have a map, a proposed full-depth reclamation map. So and we have street seal coat map, crack, crack seal maps. We're, we're pretty savvy in our GIS. So the part I wanted to, the point I wanted to make with all of this is if I were to zoom back in and show you the different pavement ratings and the different streets, one of our key strategies and probably the, the most prominent nuance is we, we, it's almost imperative that we keep the streets or the neighborhood grouping of streets in the same cycle. So for example, would be last year's full-depth reconstruction streets. If one of those streets start to fail, we want to do a little extra maintenance to ensure that the life expectancy of those roads stay about the same for that entirety of the neighborhood. Because what we don't want to do is end up in the situation where, where we build a street and now we're ready to assess someone differently. We should keep them on the same assessment and payment cycle when we get to that level of roadway maintenance. Otherwise, it gets a little difficulty. For example, with the wood duck, that's, that's a little painful where that little segment failed and we have to come back and assess just that little segment of roadway versus the entirety of the neighborhood. So, so it's a little bit of an art to group these streets and keep them in a, in a, in a grouped neighborhood. And that's what we are doing. It's like when we, when we group like the South Bridge neighborhood, we, you know, we, we're keeping them as a, keeping them as an area and keeping it as a group as we go forward, especially when we have an assessment project with them.
Well, I think it's important too to buy neighborhood or area so you're not racing from one end of the community to another. Maybe helps, helps out bidding the projects as well. And you're right, it keeps it all right on the same cycle. That wood duck anomaly that happened and then, and then we did some streets around there on some maintenance to get the area back up to the same general area, same level in that area, correct?
That's correct, Mayor, yep.
Thank you.
So based on all of those maps and a bunch of different iterations, we come up with a projected fifteen-year CIP, you know. So when, when we project that far out, it's not, we're going to precisely construct on year ten, this street. It's more placeholders. We've identified these streets, this is the projected range of the maintenance and when we feel we need to do them. But we really focus on the, you know, the immediate five-year. But it's good to do a fifteen-year to make sure that we have the, the proper amount being invested and that we do have a long-term plan. And I, I don't want to drill down on anything specific in the CIP at this point, but I did want to just show you an update that, and not with any specifics, but this is the entirety of our CIP projects for 2021, this first page here is. So the upper part of those projects are CIF, Capital Improvement Fund projects. And then we have the sewer projects, a group of the storm projects. And then the park development projects, the park asset projects, and then the, the building projects. So they're all grouped in one spreadsheet. And again, this is one year. So we've, we've put this together, work with the different departments that are all involved with every one of these type of projects and funding. And we've done one of these sheets for every single year out to twenty thirty-five. But, you know, the basis for the pavement part comes out of our pavement management program. So the next slide, you know, this, this 2021, this is fifty million dollars worth of projects. And, you know, that, that's, are we going to deliver fifty million dollars worth of projects this year? No, you know, we, we've made some adjustments, adjustments in 2021. The Maris Hansen project, we shifted to 2022. The Innovation Center, which we have a placeholder in there for sixteen million dollars, you know, a date to be determined. So that's what a CIP is about. It's a, it's a plan, but when it comes, when it comes to the budget, we make adjustments on an annual basis. The next year, the fif, the next year, 2022, again, a high dollar amount, thirty million dollars, but it's, it's the whole gamut of all our capital projects. And then, you know, I just, one more year at 2023, another twenty-seven million dollar year. So we have one page for, for each of the years. It's a little more refined, you know, within the five years. And then further out, it's, it's a swag. But we do have some data that helps us get, get to that swag part and it, and it helps us tremendously with cash flows. So that's probably the point I would turn it over to Nate is to show you what our draft CIP looks like on the budget end of it and cash flow end of it. Again, we're draft at this point, so over the next few months, Nate and I and crews, we will be drilling down on a lot of these projects and a lot of different funding mechanisms to help deliver all these projects. So if no further questions to me, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe I've got a, a short PowerPoint. And I, I, again, like, just like Mr. Lilahog, I won't be digging too deep into the numbers with my presentation. Basically, just want to kind of go over what we want to accomplish with a fifteen-year CIP and, and where we're at. Credit really should go to Mr. Lilahog and his staff for compiling the numbers for this fifteen-year CIP as it's quite a, quite a big undertaking and there's not many communities within, within Minnesota that are preparing a fifteen-year CIP. So the city does currently have a very robust five-year capital improvement plan that encompasses all capital purchases over the five-year period as well as provides sufficient level of detail for users that want to know more about a specific project. To further enhance the five-year CIP with the city council's strategic priority of effective public services, or public services, staff has been directed to develop a fifteen-year CIP. Primary objectives include the ability to provide and maintain all public infrastructure, which encompasses streets, parks and trails, government buildings and utilities. So in other words, identifying what our needs as a community are going into the future. This leads into the corresponding long-term financial planning for these projects. From past experience, the city I, I previously worked in did have a fifteen-year CIP. I do think specifically you'll see benefits in identifying the projects in year six to ten. Five years can go by pretty quick and having a better understanding of these out years give you a better feel of what's going to happen after that year five and what, what might the impacts be if you do push projects back past year five or aren't able to fund those projects. I also think it draws attention or highlights the funds that were, where revenues aren't keeping pace with project costs and where it might be beneficial to make adjustments sooner before the funding gaps become more expansive or difficult to close. And I think in general, it leads to better coordination of projects and related funding as well as a better sense of transparency. And then related to the fifteen-year CIP process and the CIP process in general, it is our intention to continue to improve on our project cost estimation accuracy and prioritization of projects. And these will be items that we just continue to discuss as we move forward. So kind of where we're at today, by design, CIP is, is very fluid. Priorities can change dramatically based on current circumstances. So this is very much a draft form that will continue to be refined. There are some limitations, predominantly, the information that's provided in, in the draft that we put out today was basically information from mainly the end of last year. That information can change throughout the process. In general, it's very, or it's a lot easier to plan for replacement. We know the original costs, anticipate a life of our infrastructure and can monitor that over time. So those can be more easily programmed, but a lot, but it's a lot more difficult to plan and plan the scope of new infrastructure, especially as you go further and further out throughout the fifteen years. Document draft itself is a very simplified approach that quickly provides the most relevant information, so your cost a year and fund all in one place. Our plan is not to do individual sheets for the years six through fifteen. Our intention is to take this document incorporated as an appendix within the five-year CIP that we're currently putting out and then use, use those fifteen-year projections to put accompanying cash flow projections for each of the funds so you can kind of see where we're at. I was going to go through the layout, I believe Steve kind of touched on that. But each, each project, working from left to right, each, each project is identify the project number, the funding source, and then there's totals for each of the project totals and yearly totals by each fund at the bottom for each of the years. The next slide, again, just not really wanting to go into any detail on any specific projects, but just to kind of give you an idea of the annual costs ranging from seven point six to fifty million. Numbers are slightly odd from what was in, in the packet as we updated a couple of projects. But it gives you a general idea of what funds and, and what funds the majority of the projects are coming out of, I guess, is what I'd like to say in, in here. Next slide is the kind of the same, same concept, just totals by fund. Majority, fifty-nine percent of our project expenditures are programmed out of the CIF fund. That would include the special assessments and the MSA columns, which are all ultimately in the CIF fund. Roughly looking at six million a year to fund those projects out of the CIF fund. So projects, including the, the pavement management index projects that Steve went through as well as other projects that might be called to the CIF fund. Just in general, the CIF fund will probably be the biggest challenge to fund moving forward. Sanitary sewer and storm drainage funds, those are all about just setting the user rates at the appropriate level. Park development primarily contingent on park dedication fees. And then your park asset build internal service funds are making sure that our internal charges are set at an adequate level to fund those replacement costs as we move forward. The very last slide, and then I'll leave it open for any other questions you might have, is just the tentative schedules as we move forward. We're going to begin to revise our fifteen-year draft already and going through the five-year CIP draft, five-year more consolidated CIP in spring. So coming up here, I think we have a, a meeting date scheduled in May to kind of kick it off internally with staff. We'll bring a draft in July to city council. That'll be adopted with the preliminary budget in September. And then the 2022 CIP projects will be adopted as part of the annual budget in December.
Thank you. Questions of staff here, Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the concerns that I have, and I've always had this concern for twenty years, is in our CIP, we have items, and I'll use the example, Innovation Center, sixteen million dollars. Well, we don't have enough funds in the CIF according to our fifteen-year plan. So we're going to have to, you know, find funds and usually they come from the taxpayers. But it was never our intention to, to pay that sixteen million dollars for that project. But we're using that dollar amount as rationale for needing more money from our taxpayers. And I, I disagree with that concept. I also disagree with, you know, we put four hundred thousand dollars aside for a park and we build a six hundred thousand dollar park. And then when we have to come back and redo that park, it's more expensive twenty years down the road. You know, it's, it's really easy to want things and purchase them with somebody else's money when they're things that you don't necessarily need, but you just want the half a million dollars on wayfinding signs and, and things like this. I mean, would you maintain your roads or, or would you do this over here? And at some point, we have to prioritize because, you know, I know the federal government thinks money grows on trees, but it really doesn't. I've been, I planted one, it never grew, so.
Is that the little one, the Charlie Brown tree you have on your boulevard?
That's the city's tree.
Okay, Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank staff. I think this is a lot of work, in-depth, comprehensive, kind of glance into the crystal ball. And it's based on data, so I think that's important. It's not just fairy tales here. You know, the, the CIF fund, once it gets out there a few years, always gets a little questionable. It varies depending on what's needed, of course. Those costs are fluid and in flux like was mentioned. But this fifteen-year portion, as I think was mentioned, is an appendix to our five-year plan is absolutely transparent to our community. They know that out here, ten, twelve, fifteen years, there's these projects that are planned. And we're actually looking at putting away money for, so that we can get these projects done. We know that the five-year plan is really the more focused plan, but it comes down to that one year, what are we going to budget for next year? Is the actual dollars that gets spent. So I like what's been put in front of us here. We've got some work to do on how we get there and during our budget cycle, I think. That's all I have.
Councilor Brennan?
Steve had indicated that there's a three percent adjustment that is used every year to increase the dollar amount. Is there any point in time that we look at that project like halfway through the fifteen years, like a seven and a half years or, or five years to really narrow down? If, if that three percent increase yearly has been adequate or not? And do we do, at the five-year point, do we really look at that project and say, yeah, we're on, we're on target? Or we're going to have to do something else to increase that?
Steve?
Mayor and council members, you know, projecting, what we're really doing is projecting what the costs are going to be fifteen years out, which is very difficult. You know, we, we, we try our best just to project to next year and we're sometimes off by a, unfortunately, too big of a factor. So again, it's placeholders. Three percent is probably a little strong on some areas and maybe a little light on others. In the past, I would say that we, you know, we, we've looked at reducing the long-term percentage, so it wasn't three percent. It was, you know, something lesser than that, like one point five percent after the first five years. So again, it's projection. I guess what I would ask to focus on is not necessarily that factor for fifteen years. Certainly drilling down, you know, in the near term, in the five years. But one number I would ask you to focus on and, and kind of reconfirm is, when I go to the pavement index, so we are on the same page with these projects. Is seventy, is that what we want to strive for? You know, for example, if the council was happy with a, with a sixty-five, well, then we would, you know, lessen up the strategy. But maybe you want it in eighty. So that's why, that's why it's good to have this pavement rating. So we, we stay in sync with where you want your, we, we spend five million dollars annually on pavement. That's, that's notable, so I want to be on the same page with the city council and our investment strategy. And pertaining to all of those other projects, most of the projects, you know, there's some outliers like the Innovation Center, sixteen million dollars, County Highway eighty-three, our participation with county projects. Sometimes they're, they're, they put a lot of pressure on our, on our budgets. But for the most part, the park maintenance, that is maintenance that we need to do to our current assets. The building fund, building internal service fund, those are, those are expenditures that we need to do for the most part to maintain our current assets and our buildings. So a lot of it, you know, sewer fund, water fund, sewer. So a lot of it, you know, sewer fund, water fund, sewer fund and stormwater fund. Most of that is maintenance of our current assets. But certainly there are those new projects that are in the CIP, but so there's a blend of all of them. Did that help?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting looping back?
No, thank you. My questions have been answered.
All right. Counselor Contreras, you want to weigh in here?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, it's, it's a lot to, to take in, to be honest, and not being my scope, obviously. I'm following his direction, Steve's direction. And I understand, well, the question, I think what he is trying to look for direction is. Do we want to stay on the 70? And and I, I feel that that is a good place to be. I don't want to, you know, fall and and not maintain them. So with that said, I think, I think that's what he's looking for. So it's the 5 million annually. I think that's where, I think that's what I'm trying to understand if I'm not mistaken. So I feel and and like. Councilmember Whiting said it looks very transparent. We are showing our constituents what we're doing for the, for the coming years. So I don't know unless I I misunderstood.
No, I think that's a, thank you for your comments. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you. I'll circle back, I guess. If you, that's what you're looking for, the pavement management plan. I think 70. Would be a good number to start with. I think. 65 might put us down. I guess it's hard to really judge. I think it's staff has a good handle on that. But 70 is a large investment to put away, but it's also planning ahead for the future.
My comments on this, I think. As old as our community is, as new as our community is, I think we have very, very good roads. And I think they're maintained very well. I've learned over my years. About homeownership or a car or an asset that you own that if, if you don't invest in it after you buy it. You know, it deteriorates and then it costs you actually more. You actually have to replace it at the end, which is very expensive. Or you can get more out of it with some ongoing maintenance every year. You can pay me now or pay me later. It's interesting where he has, Steve showed those costs per linear feet. That were at a dollar and a half or whatever for chip and seal compared to full-depth reconstruction. I do think we have very good roads. I think 70 is a good mark because it keeps it up at a little higher level. If we lower that, I, I just would hate to see what the further long-term costs would be as you go down. I grew up in Duluth, Minnesota. I don't know what their PCI is, but I can assure you it's not 70. And they actually neglected their roads and the infrastructure underneath there. And they had to now enact a sales tax that was truly dedicated to roads and road infrastructure. And they have, I think they're putting in a well over $10 million, $12 million a year. From that sales action to getting their roads back up. And it would take 30 years for them to get back up to square one. And could you imagine if you did the road today and then moved on? And then 30 years, you're going to have to do that other road over again. So I'm blessed. I do want to comment on the 15-year CIP. A daunting task. I know it was a direction that our, this council gave staff. I really want to thank you because there's a lot in there. It's more project than money because it's so far out. But the amount of work, the amount of planning, the amount of data that's in there. I think, I think that'll be a good as an appendix. We're not approving anything, but you can start to see projects more further out. As Counselor Lehman said, so, you know, projects come and go. They get placed in there, they get bumped, they get deemed not important. When we set our budget, we're looking at, you know, the next year. And you're getting a little snapshot of maybe a year out. Those are the things, but to, to have a longer-term plan like that with some markers, I think is a very good long-term planning. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take just a little different approach and and try to explain why I'm going to take this approach. I'm going to take an approach of 65. And the reason I take that approach is if we look at a lot of our newer roads in town. Obviously, they're built to a different standard than many of our older roads. And the older roads, I'm going to compare it to having an old car. That has a pretty thin rusty frame. And at 350,000 miles, the motor blows. Do you put a new motor in it knowing the frame is rusty? No, you don't. So we know that we have some older roads in town where the underlying infrastructure soils, whatnot, subgrade. Are not conducive to trying to get the life we're trying to get out of it. Okay? That doesn't mean you tear it up right now. Yeah, you might want to try to preserve it, but I think the strategy is different. On that road than it might be for a road that's 10 years old. So my strategy is a little bit different. I don't want to put a whole lot of money into a road that we know. Isn't going to last because of reasons outside of the control of above the road, of what maintenance we can do on it. We can chip seal it and crack fill it all we want. If the subgrade is coming apart, it's not, it's a Band-Aid. Okay? It's a tourniquet, and you probably are losing money by doing that. So I'm taking the approach of the rusty frame doesn't get a new motor. And matter of fact, you probably wouldn't even put a used motor in it because at some point the frame is just too far gone. So I'm, I'm going with a 65. Into it. So it's not just crystal clear. And I think Steve could probably appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan, did you have any comment on this?
I, I, I guess I can see both of both opinions, but I would rather keep it at the 70. But I think at some point it's, you know, 65 or 70. But I, how much of a difference there would be? But, you know, I think the better quality roads, I have been in some cities, like the mayor said. Some cities that don't keep their roads up and it's a, it's a, it's a distraction. And it's not pleasing into the neighborhood and it's not something that you want to sell your city on. So because you drive into the city and you go, wow, they, they're nearly not taking care of, of business here. So I would rather have it up at the higher level.
Does city staff have enough direction? And offered enough discussion here on both road maintenance and the 15-year first look draft at the CIP?
We do. Thank you, Mayor and council members.
Thank you very much. Let's move forward. Before us, 11A is our city bill list for our review. Any questions, comments on the city bill list? If not, we would move ahead then to 11B1, our liaison reports and administration report. Counselor Lehman?
Got to unmute. Scale executive met. Legislative update was discussed, future meeting topics. We're going to be discussing raising the city's fees back up to what they were pre-pandemic. And there's a discussion coming up on some bylaw changes. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I met with the downtown Main Street Group, formerly Main Street Group. They're still looking at some projects this summer. First off, for the fall, they plan on taking the pumpkins in the park and. Trick or treat on Main and trying to combine that event into one event. And right now they're currently kind of watching the governor's, what the governor is going to do with the COVID restrictions and things. But pencil this in on your calendars, at least starting July 14th through August 11th. They are planning rhythm on the rails for that, depending on where we are and where the governor is at with restrictions for all that type of thing. And of course, the farmers market is coming back and they're moving that to Fridays downtown. I'm not sure if the site is set yet. They're looking at a couple of different spots to put that. But that'd be the first, starting the first week of June through the end of October. Then. The other meeting was the MVTA met. We're working on kind of dual grants to improve the Burnsville bus garage. So there's kind of like two separate projects. So in the same kind of, they have to run, be running two different phases because of two different grants anyway. But it's for one major project on the Burnsville bus garage. Should be able to get from, I think it was around 70 buses to 100 buses in the garage. So it's a big improvement. And some other things I wanted to point out, I think. Mr. Reynolds sent you out the form about how. Shakopee and our business community still leads in public and private partnerships. I think we're the only city that has folks investing in the bus route. And we really got to thank our partners in in that with. The Shakopee Bedwaketen community, in this case, donating $100,000 to that, keeping that bus route and keeping those stops open. Along with Amazon and I know we are currently working with Valley Fair to get a, a stop at least there and moving forward with that. So that's all I have for my liaison's report.
There was good news on that public partner, private partnership and see that effort and. They're great. I thought that was wonderful. Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Okay, I, I thank you. I attended the Easter egg hunt. And helped out with that and nobody noticed that it was raining and kind of chilly. And, and I understand that there was a, a snowplow that was named. I don't, I don't remember what the name was. If anybody has that out there, that'd be nice to hear what that was. I attended the swearing-in of Officer Stockman yesterday. So congratulations to her for joining our community. And then I also had the SPU meeting last night. And the next meeting in April, the Minnesota Health Department will be in attendance to discuss water quality and answer questions. So if any council member has any questions regarding water quality, they can forward it to Mr. Reynolds. And then I'll, I'll ask the representative at that time. The commission welcomed new members BJ Letourneau and Jason Creek and held the election of officers. Kathy Mokel was named president and Kayden Fox vice president. And. I think that's, that's all I have tonight.
Counselor Brennan, thank you very much. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the Shakopee Diversity Alliance is holding discussions and educational webinars. Partner, partnering up with Allyship and the, and the first one was the connection to awareness that was held March 29th. And how to be an ally and how to engage in these conversations. The next one, the coming up will be April 12th at 7:00 PM. And that will be policing in Scott County featuring our Scott County Sheriff, Luke Kennon. And he will be discussing the role of sheriff's office in our community, the sheriff's office in the community. And the mission, mission, vision of the Scott County Sheriff's Office in initiatives he has taken around training, recruitment. Community engagement and mental health. And then the one after will be Chief Tate on that one, but I don't have the, the date on that one yet. And then for school board, so school board has decided that the Shakopee Secondary. IHD students in grade, grade six to 12 at East, West and High School would transition into in-person. To the in-person portion of the learning model on April 20th. Again, they're still watching numbers. We know numbers are going up, but for now that's what it's set at. There'll be another Pratt team and another meeting. The Pratt team will meet on Tuesday, but the school board will make, you know, if needed, will make another decision on, on Monday. And then also due to the levying up passing. Budget cuts have been approved and they, you know, include transportation, contract service, utilities and due process secretary committee. Which is in the special ed department. So and and more to come, many, many more to come. That's it. Oh, and before I forget, I too with Counselor Lehman, sorry, Counselor Brennan. I attended the swearing-in of Officer Taylor Stockman. And if I'm not mistaken, she is a third generation in that, you know, is in law enforcement. So that, we're, we're, you know, congratulations to her and proud that she chose Shakopee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, very much. I do not have a mayor's report, but I do want to mention that I'd like everybody to be safe and secure. Even everybody, some people are getting vaccinated and that's proceeding and really count on the fast track. But we need to really be on guard here. And, and be watchful and cognizant of, of what's going on. So. That is my report and I would move forward to the administration report. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items. First of all, you can expect to see in your mailbox soon. If you're one of 20, 2,000 randomly selected households, our 2021 community survey. This is a survey we do every couple of years to kind of do a baseline on, on how we are doing in comparison to other communities. And even if you are not one of the 2,000 households that are selected for it, and that'll be coming out, I believe, in the next week or so. You can in May sign up online and take it online. So you have the multiple ways that we can get the data. So in recent months, police agencies across the Minneapolis-St. Paul metro have seen a surge in catalytic converter thefts. In Shakopee, there have been over 70 since April of 2020. Now, that, that has an incredible impact on individuals because it takes about $2,000 to $4,000 to replace it. And obviously it takes some time to replace it. The Shakopee Police Department has decided to try to do something to combat that theft. And they will, on Friday, March, April 16th, offer a free event. Where officers will get under the vehicles and mark the catalytic converters with the license plate. Paint them so that they are a different color and then put a sticker on it. Also notifying anyone who has it that this is an etched catalytic converter. It's called etch and catch. And the whole idea. Is to try to dissuade anyone from crawling under there. And then if they look, the whole concept on the catalytic converter, converter theft is it's incredibly easy to get them. And they all look alike and they can all put, be put in a bin and then gotten rid of. And, and essentially for about 250 bucks apiece. Which, which is phenomenal. I just, I was blown away when I heard that. So yes, can, can a thief steal it? And can they scrub off the paint and can they scratch off the, 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 the ID on it? Sure, they can, but that's a heck of a lot of work. And they're not really known for work because it takes 60 seconds to about, to drop a catalytic converter. So it, it certainly won't stop the threats, but it is something that we can do. And it also, we're letting, we're putting the crooks on notice that we are doing this. We're publicizing it. It'll, there'll be press release that goes out tomorrow on it. And, and what we're saying is that we're watching, we're looking, and we're going to make it very difficult for you to continue doing this. Because oftentimes it hurts those that least can afford to be hurt. And with that, Mayor, that's, that's all I have. That's my report.
Great. Thank you for that. And the catalytic converter aspect of it, I appreciate that. It's not just Shakopee, it's all over the metro. Counselor Lehman? It's not just Shakopee, it's all over the metro. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, with some expertise in this area, certified since eighty-nine, let me add on to that. I think one of the areas that would really help would be the places that these converters are taken to have a standard to accept. And when I put a converter on a car, and there's many reasons, legitimate reasons to replace converter, plugged up, the honeycomb inside is busted, and it's rattling as the car is running, or it's not doing its function, reducing hydrocarbons. We as professional installers are required by federal law, the canoe converter comes with a four triplicate, four times, that you fill out, customer has to sign it. One copy goes with the converter. You have to hold it for a certain length of time in your shop. One copy gets mailed to the federal government. One copy we have to keep in our records, and one copy goes with the customer. So if somebody comes in with a converter to a shop to sell it, and it has that paperwork, it has the shop's name on it, the customer's name on it, and that should almost be a requirement to accept it, unless you're the owner of the car. And it's unfortunate that these thieves have to find ways to make people's lives miserable because you can't really use your car with an open exhaust underneath without being a fire hazard. So it is frustrating, and many shops are willing to do other things for customers to help secure them catalytic converters while they're doing regular services if they wanna ask for that service.
Thank you very much for those comments. Let's move ahead then. Item number twelve, is there any other business before this council? Any other business? Seeing none, then we would move to item number thirteen, adjournment. Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M.
I have a motion and a second on the floor from Counselor Contreras. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. We stand adjourned this city council meeting for April sixth at nine oh nine. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Good night.